Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'll call this common council meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk call roll, please?
Brown, here. Evan?
Here.
Foudy?
Here.
Grattan?
Here.
Moros?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
First item of business is approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next we have the approval minutes of the previous meetings. Is there a motion to that effect?
Abol.
Second.
Motion by Schuster, second by Moros. Any further discussion, questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next we have the approval minutes of the intervening meetings. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Foudy, second by Schuster. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next we have the public hearing for the second public participation meeting for the CDBGED. Is there a motion to open up the public hearing portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to Jason now. Give us an overview and...
Yep, so overview of the project. Plans and specifications have been prepared for that project. We have put that out to bid. And as luck would have it, the bid opening was this morning on that project. We received...
Maybe it'd be easier, Jason. Why don't you stand right up here in the corner?
Sure.
Take Jeanette's spot there. You can warm it up a little bit.
It's not hard for me.
As long as you know he's gonna burn minutes, you can only have so many minutes in that spot.
So, as I mentioned, the project bid out this morning and we received six bidders on the project with Copeland and Kenaus out of Green Lake as the apparent low bidder. The bids were still, I'd say, up in the neighborhood of the one bid that we received last year. They were about, I think it was $15,000 less than the bid that we received last year. So they were still up there mainly due to the pipe pricing. The pipe pricing was still fairly elevated, as you guys can imagine, from the supply chains and things like that. But, so, we did at least get more bidders this time. And everybody was right in the kind of the same ballpark of each other. So we didn't really have any, you know, out left field bids. They were all kind of in the neighborhood. So with that, that will be coming through the city for award here in the coming weeks. And then, once that contractor is selected, we'll be talking with them as far as the start of construction and when they'd like to get going on that this year. I would anticipate it will be sometime in spring, once the weather turns here and they're ready to get started on the project. But I guess more information will come on that. And then, just as a reminder, this project work over on the city was awarded the $700,000 through the CDBG closed program, which is the point of the public hearing here. And that was through the public facilities funds, which was available through Dodge County. And to date, no funds have been dispersed yet, but that will work through whatever with that department as the project proceeds and the need for those funds becomes relevant. So, I guess with that, I'll open it up to any other questions. And if there's any citizens that have questions, but are there any questions?
I can make the comment, I know this contracting outfit, this is a little bit of a unique process this time. Most of the time, we usually have a paving contractor that sublets the excavating. Now we have an excavating contractor that's gonna sublet the paving and what have you. So, but they are a quality firm. They've been around a long time. I have worked with them on septic jobs and stuff like that.
Yeah, and we've worked out on numerous other reconstruction projects and they do a good job.
Good equipment, good staff.
Yep, yep.
Any questions for Jason? A little disappointing, we didn't get a little more favorable pricing, but I guess that's the market out there right now. Can you tell us how far over the pricing was from MSA's estimate?
I believe we were still about, it was like 70,000 or 80,000 above what our estimate was. So, again, not as bad as it was from bidding out last year, we only had the one bid. But it still was over kind of what we were initially estimating. But again, a lot of that has to do with just all the inflation and just pricing the materials and stuff that we've been seeing this past year, so...
Why don't you bring the council up to speed on how we're gonna handle the paving in two parts here? That is TBG money being spent in this year?
Yeah, so, one of the, if you wanna call it counter, just one of the stipulations that comes along with this money is that it has to be spent by October 31st of this year. So, that was the reason why we were still kind of working through the details of the remaining Oak Street blocks that were discussed previously or ever. So we're still working through the design of that and we're still, you know, working on securing the property for the cul-de-sac on the east end amongst other things or ever. So that's still in the works here, but we also felt the need to get this project work going so that we didn't lose out on the opportunity to take advantage of this money from the county or ever. So, so there will be kind of two stages of paving where, you know, this contractor, again, depending upon their schedule, will tackle the two blocks of Highland and the one block of Oak Street between Depot and Highland. And so likely that paving will take place. We will plan on doing the binder course only for that project work with the hopes that once the Oak Street, the other blocks of Oak Street take place or ever, we'll be able to do the surface course on all of it at once or ever. So it does look at the end like one clean, continuous project is the hope, so...
Bottom line, we won't beat up the finish coat on Highland to do the other two adjoining streets.
Correct, yep.
I mean, we could live with the binder coat for two years if we elect to go even further up on Oak Street.
Correct, yep. Yeah, I mean, as long as nothing heavy is driving on it, other than, you know, your occasional garbage truck, yeah, it should hold up.
Snowplows, the valves and the manholes are all ramped with blacktop with the binder coats. So that's not really a issue as far as falling snow either, so...
Right.
You mentioned the possible cul-de-sac on the end of Oak Street?
Yes.
First I heard of that. Well, we haven't had a public hearing yet on that yet, so there might be mixed reviews on that. But that is the more affordable option when we're looking to do that. We still have to acquire some land to do that. But all of this, with the stumbling block with a bid that wasn't real favorable last year, it kind of slowed the process down a little bit. We wanted to see where we came out rather than plowing forward, you know, and not knowing how much we were gonna do or what we could afford to do. So, but I'm only hoping the next numbers look as good, I guess, so... Are the front lot pins gonna be GPSed and put back in by the sidewalk, on the new sidewalks there?
If they happen to be taken out by the project worker, I mean, as part of our survey work or ever, we found as many of them as we believe exists out there or ever as part of our initial topo work. So those ones that we found will be reset if they're disturbed by the contractor. And then, I guess, any ones that we didn't find out there that either don't exist right now, I guess that would be a decision that we'd have to make collectively as to whether or not those do get reset if they weren't there existing beforehand. Because if we have the coordinates on the pin or ever, that can just be reset in the same place that it was found. But if there's nothing there or ever, then technically you have to go through a certified survey process to reset the pin legally, so...
Other questions? We have to ask for public comment two more times, maybe?
Yes. Are there any other comments?
Any other, any more questions or comments from the public? Seeing none? Anything else you want to cover under the public hearing portion of this? You pretty much touched on all the bases?
Yeah.
Anything else on the CDBG?
Nope.
Should be good. Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Brown, second by Schuster. Any further dis... Oh, Moros, throw in your votes.
That's what I was trying to do.
Motion by Moros, second by Schuster to close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. What's your next, next item that you're gonna address, Jason? Anything else? I mean, anything that you have to cover at tonight's meeting, or...
No, I mean, since the bids just came in, I would assume we'll just handle the award of that at the next meeting since we didn't have a chance to get it on the agenda, so...
Correct.
But that would be the, that would be the next step in the processes to formally award that work to the contractor and then continue to press forward with contract documents and handling all the pre-construction formalities with the contractor, so...
Does contractor share anything with you as far as schedule, what he'd like to see?
Not yet, nope, not yet. I haven't had a chance to talk to them at all today, now that they, you know, now that they realize that they're probably the low bid, so...
I guess kind of find out what his workload is, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So we'd like to get moving on this so we're not, our backs aren't against the wall for that October deadline?
Yeah.
So everything goes well on that, so...
Yep, I'll reemphasize that to them when I talk to them.
Okay, nothing else from Jason, I guess we'll move on. Communications. I don't have really anything to report. Last month, we talked about the gas leak and whatever. We did critique that at the fire department as well. Whatever, everything seems to be back to normal in Juneau. And I have had some discussion with reps from Alliant in regards to what the future would look like for getting an alternative line coming in as Juneau. And they said they would look into it, so hopefully something like that will happen. Other than that, I don't have anything to report. Clerk, you have anything? Other than your official report?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right. Moving on, we next have approve the payments of bills. Checks of $1,155,925.57. Vouchers, there are none. Electronic transfers, $347,162.41. Is there a motion to approve the payment of the bills?
Make the motion to pay the bills.
Sorry. Motion by Grattan, second by Schuster. Any further discussion?
I was just wondering, are we just paying them all in full, or, because we always had voucher amounts? I just don't know if there's a change?
Yeah, what I've been doing is once we get the bills, we're paying them. So we also do bills weekly now instead of twice a month. So, it's for educational purposes and...
A lot of them are due like a week after you get them, so...
By the time, exactly, so it's like, you might as well. So it's working out well.
Well, good.
Yep.
Okay. Go call vote, please.
Grattan?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Foudy?
Aye.
Moros?
Aye.
Payment of bills have been approved. Reports of officials. Mayor, I have nothing to report. Clerk, treasurer.
We filled the deputy clerk position. Kaylee Visser started effective yesterday. And next week, we start the audit. So this week, we've been busy with preparing for the request from Baker Tilly.
Any questions for Megan?
So was she the LTE?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on then, reports, written reports. We have only the building permit report to review tonight. Any questions on those? Seeing none, then we'll go on to reports of committees, commissions and boards. Library report, Jeanette.
Ask me, Mayor, where I was today. I was probably chomping.
Jeanette, where were you today?
I was at the state capitol.
Oh my gosh.
For library legislative day. And you should be very proud Dodge County was represented very well. There were five directors that were brand new to this legislative day. And we all decided, let's all go in green together, hold each other's hands. We met with our representatives and our senators and if they weren't present, their aides. And I was handed this by the governor today. Last year, actually, library legislative day was virtual. So even the governor and the Wisconsin Library Association director, they're like, isn't it great to get together? So this is just saying on behalf of the people of the state of Wisconsin, I'm pleased to commend, I got new glasses by the way, yeah, commend Juneau Public Library for its service to our state. And then it goes on to tell us even more. But without your support, city of Juneau and the state's support, which is what we were there for, to thank them for, we couldn't do that. We couldn't serve our public, so I thank you for that. And it was exciting, all five of us that went as rookies are now like, yeah, we're going back next year. That was, that was fun to see what's happening at the state level. So then, this is actually, I'll pass this around, what they had, what Wisconsin libraries wanted us to thank our representatives for. We were able, with the increased funding that was given, and I'll tell you, I didn't know the history still until I started looking. It was not pretty in 2008. And funding went down, and now it's starting to build again. So we're able to provide online classes, technology improvements, workforce development partnerships and programming kits. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. If you are ever interested in looking at the map of all the library systems in our state, here we are, Monarch Library system is four counties, but this is your entire state and we all partner and we all get a little piece of the pie. So this just gets you a little bit more informed. So, what do we got? Three down here. John's gonna pass it. I used to be a teacher, pass it down.
He will.
Pass it over. There's always one. I did share with you last month about Hoopla. Hoopla is a new digital platform that we were test driving and just launched in January. I have my usage that just came in an email yesterday and 61 Juneau residents took advantage of Hoopla. We're going to keep marketing it. And what I've noticed is our patrons are interested in movies. So you know you probably pay a subscription fee for Netflix or Disney Plus or whatever. So Hoopla is just like that, but it's free with a library card. So continue to promote that. If you haven't tried it yourself, I'm gonna leave these here. This tells you exactly how to sign up. You need a library card first, but you can grab that. Any questions for your director?
How was your Abraham Lincoln?
I'm glad you asked, yes.
He was very good.
I have, I have heard, because I was not there, that it was phenomenal. I think we had about 40 to 45 people. It was an amazing partnership within the city. We had the Emerald Clovers Homemakers Group provide snacks. They put them in little bags and it was kind of a take it and enjoy it at home. Little cheese sticks that looked like Abraham Lincoln. They had little top hats on them. He himself was fascinating. Over 40 years of presenting yourself as Abraham Lincoln, he's got it polished and it was a wonderful thing. The talk from my library hands that were present said, people are like, are you gonna have him back? So that tells me that's, that's a positive program when they say, we want to hear this again and tell our friends about it, so...
Yeah, we were there.
You were there.
He was excellent. It was an excellent presentation and impressive. It was very impressive.
Yeah, so if you haven't been in the library, we do have some Civil War memorabilia, even in our glass locked case there. So we're just taking advantage of all those things that we celebrate in February as well with President's Day and Abe and all of that. All right, you're studying that map. There's a quiz next month. Thank you for your time.
Moving on, plan commission, David.
We did not meet.
Cheryl, finance.
We did meet. There were many things to be discussed. We haven't met since, I believe, we finalized our budget, so we were thankful for a bit of a reprieve, but now we're back at it. We talked about increasing a city fee for variances. People ask for variances for their property and there is a lot of requirements for it to make sure it's done correctly. And we were not sure that we were covering the costs for that effectively because time is money, as well as your paper and that type of thing that needs to be done with it. Talked about our payroll system and the issues that we've been having with getting things correct from ADP, what we needed to do about that. And also, we are looking for an upgrade to Casell, which is our software system that we use for the city. That was due to be upgraded as it was. And the request was made to move our payroll back to Casell. Our users are familiar with Casell for payroll. And being that we know that there were some insulation problems with ADP when we first brought it onboard, that was a consideration that we had and we'll have a resolution in regards to that. We were asked to approve the replacement of six windows in the library with the capital expenditures. At this point in time, that one was not granted. We will continue to look further what we can and can't do for helping with that, knowing that there is some need there. And then, looking at replacement equipment for the walk-in cooler at the community center right now, or as of our meeting. It was working, had been repaired and was working okay. We'll continue to look into that as far as what the need is there. We did send it back to DPW and said, go get us some more quotes. One quote is not sufficing for finance to approve, so that was where we went with that. And then Ashton came and presented in regards to the NFC Fitness Court and was gonna talk with us about that and did a great job of presenting. And in just a moment, Ashton, I'm gonna ask you to present what you presented to us because we do have a resolution on this as well. And then we did talk about, a little bit about expansion with the TID for the city, for a business in the city. We don't have that information and that will need to go in this closed session should that information come back to us. So at that point in time, we didn't have it. So Ashton, if you will, present what your NFC Fitness Court is. And we did ask her to get us some answers, so...
Tell me to come to the hot seat?
If you would.
Don't step on the trapdoor.
Did you see her shirt? This would be a nice... So the NFC Fitness Court is through the National Fitness Campaign. It is a 38 by 38 outdoor fitness court. So it's not just about, just a court that you'll have in your park, but about community wellness, hoping to provide classes for people. If they get certified through the NFC, you can get ambassadors with those the city would provide. That would be like free fitness classes for anybody. If someone wanted to leave their own classes on it, they could. They can do whatever they'd like. But this is what the court looks like, I don't know if everybody can see it. It's a pretty blue court. And with this, you can, I have a lot of papers here, so I apologize. So the, all the different things you can do with the fitness court. There is a agility section, a part with, it says bend, but they're like hamstring curls. Squat section, core, push-ups, pull-ups. I don't know if I said lunges already, but there's a ton you can do with the court within just a 38 by 38 square. It will be in, if it's all passed, it will be next to the Addy Joss Field in between the utility building and the field. So let me show this correctly. So here's the Addy Joss and then the court is right next...
North is Shelter.
Yes.
Of the Chambers Shelter.
Directions, yes. So yeah, so I received, so we are no longer going with the splash pad due to the cost over time. It was a very large amount at the 15-year mark, for example. So I was told to find different alternatives and this was the product I found. So with the splash pad, we were granted a $100,000 grant. So I had to reapply for it and I was awarded that grant. And along with the NFC, they, you applied for a $30,000 grant, so I was awarded that as well. So I have $130, $130, $130,000 from grant money. And I went to the finance committee as there was about $48,000 left to fund as with the splash pad project. There was $100,000 from the city that was put for that project, put towards the project. And I asked if I could take essentially half of that and use it for the NFC Fitness Court as we're no longer going with splash pad. So that's where I'm at right now. I will, I have all your answers to your questions too. So one of your questions was maintenance on materials. I talked with Kara, who is the gal I've been talking about through this whole process. She says one to two times a year it needs a power wash. A yearly inspection, which the inspection consists of check tightness of hardware, check condition of all cables, chains, connectors, checks very loose rivets, condition of graphics and repair, condition of paint and condition of the flooring. So that is all in the maintenance kit. It's not a crazy, large demand on maintenance, I guess. And during the winter, I just shovel it with a plastic shovel, so not too, not too much work there. And also, the next question was, what is the material made out of? Sorry, I'm bombarding your papers here. So it is made out of a high-quality dual-layer powder coating carbon steel. That's what the bars are made out of. It's a tamper-resistant galvanizing stainless steel bolts and fittings. The graphic, well, we're not getting graphics on it as a, that was an additional cost. But the vinyl on it, I guess, is an anti-graffiti laminate vinyl. So that's good, anti-graffiti or any hoodlums or anything. And that was one of the questions, how does it resist vandalism? The next one was, oh, also the flooring, I forgot to add that. It is a, they're 24 by 24 inch squares. They are a, like, rubber mat square, if that makes sense. Also... And they're all-weather sports surface. So they're made to resist the weather, especially in Wisconsin. The next question was warranty on all of the equipment. So there is a 25-year limited warranty on the wall structure and the frames for that. There is a three-year limited warranty on the squat boxes, lunch steps and bend boxes. A five-year limited warranty on outer wall panels, brackets, pulley bars, foot strips, push ladders and row stands. And there is a one-year limited warranty on the wall graphics, cables, rings, bend cushions, which is the cushion on top of the blocks here. The plyo box, top surface, rowing handles and chains and all other components provided by the NFC. Yeah, so the next question was, was the timeline on the project? So back when, I wasn't exactly sure when the project would for sure happen. This was the original timeline, so we're about a month behind what the original timeline was. So right now, if it were to continue to go down smoothly, the shipment of the equipment, which the equipment gets shipped before the project and it gets stored, it will be stored potentially at DPW in one of their sheds. So that will be shipped around the beginning of March. Install for equipment would be... Install for equipment would be June and the project would be assembled and the press launch release would be in July. So early, it would start in early summer or spring, I guess. I got the quote from Bailey's Concrete. That quote came back at $12,996, which was more than what, than I was told. But that was a guesstimate, that was not a for-sure amount. So I, Megan and I talked and then Megan called Dan. And because originally, at the Finance Committee meeting, $45,000 was put towards it from the splash pad money. And I needed $47,996. So it was a change to $48,000 because of the concrete work. And then also, so while things go to plan, 30 days after, if I would get the okay, an invoice will be sent and that will be $110,000, which $100,000 of the grant I received will go towards that and then $10,000 from the city. And I did figure out that the $30,000 grant that I received will just be used as a credit. I will not receive a check and then, so it'll just be taken out of it from, on their side of things. And then after the $110,000 is paid, then that, there's a separate PO with the national installer. So people who come to actually install all of the equipment. So that is a separate purchase order that will be paid farther along the process around when it would be assembled. So, yeah, and 30 days after approval is when we will get the invoice for the $110,000. So I hope I answered all the questions.
These were questions we asked at Finance that she's bringing back to us because it was a conditional, we needed, felt we needed some more information for you folks here before we said, "Yeah, okay, we're going to give this to her completely." Any questions for Ashton, I guess I would ask? Ashton, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That being said, the proposal, the resolution that we have in here is actually a change of our resolution, 09/2021, that we're looking to amend. We did allocate of our borrowing monies $100,000 to Rec Department for a splash pad. That $100,000 has to be spent by the end of this year because it was of our borrowing monies. That is part of the dynamic out of, in our conversation at Finance. Not wishing to take the difference of these monies back away from Recreation because often Recreation gets the short end of the stick, knowing that they have projects potentially coming forward. And I think Ashton, you are to be commended for finding the grants. $130,000 is a huge amount of money for the city and thank you. Thank you so very much. So in being able to do this, more than half of it's being paid by grants. So I don't think there's any reason why the city would not move forward with this. With that being said, I would like to read Resolution 09/2021 with the following changes made to this. I will read them with those changes in. Approve future projects from additional 2021 borrowing. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed $866,350 remaining in our borrowing for 2021. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends the remaining funds be distributed as follows. $550,000 to Public Works for street projects. Like the changes, $50,000 to Recreation Department for NFC Fitness Court with the remaining $50,000 to remain there as for Rec Department. $85,000 to Fire Department for air packs and cylinders. $125,000 to Public Works for a street sweeper. The balance of $6,350 we put in a contingency fund for future projects to be determined. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this eighth day of February 2022. I move for passage of amended Resolution 09/2021.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Fudi. Questions, comments? Thought I directed you, it was $48,000.
Yes, it does say, I'm sorry.
Oh, so I'm going by the.
We're all confused, I'm confused here, all confused. He, I said 50, he said 48.
And I just said 50. My, my resolution is 50, in case there should be anything else that.
50 used and 50 still in the file.
50 used for this, if she doesn't use it, it comes back here anyway, so it's not.
As long as it's signed with the right of bounds.
Thank you, I'll just fix it too.
You wrote it as 48 though, right?
Yes. That's what you and I had discussed earlier today.
Because it was a little under 3 over.
Right.
So that's why it was 48. If you're going by absolute numbers.
I'm okay not going with absolute numbers on this one.
Okay, I'll remind you on the next one. There was a wise man that tried to advise him that that number for concrete wasn't heavy enough. We kept it at a smaller amount, so, so we're catching up now, so that's fine. Any other discussion, questions or comments? See you done. Roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Fudi?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Murrows?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution 09/2021 has passed.
Resolution 71/2021 is the next one. There are two copies on your system of this on your pads here. So this one is a change and upgrade to our Casell software. It's a necessary change. It didn't matter who was our clerk treasurer, that change was coming. This software does have a, what is the word? I can't remember what the word is. No, not connect, that's not what I'm looking for. Not the word I'm looking for. Anyway, as far as you won't have to pay for an upgrade on the future system on, on this Casell software. That to us was huge because software goes outdated. This is a municipal software. It is not something for a police department or for the local steel company or whatever company you work for. This is municipal software. And the request was made to move forward with this. And like I said, move our payroll back over to Casell. It had been on Casell previously. We moved it to ADP and have had some issues with it ever since. Don't know what those problem, the reasons are for those problems, whether it's ADP, lack of training, not set up correctly, don't know. At this point in time, we need to do something with it. So this resolution goes for that, Resolution 71/2021. Prove the purchase of new civic systems, computer software and conversion services. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed the need to purchase new civic systems, computer software upgrade, including payroll and conversion services for City Hall. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends to approve the purchase of new civic systems, computer software and conversion services at a cost not to exceed $18,870 as shown in Exhibit A using the general funds budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this eighth day of February 2022.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Fudi. Further discussion, questions or comments?
Was part of the problem, you think, with ADP that they, I don't think were sophisticated enough or capable to handle all the different kinds of payroll, is what I got from it?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Like with all the different municipal codes that we use and all of, you know, the.
There's so many different structures.
Yeah, there's so many different codes, I think that was, that's part of the issue.
It's just what, it doesn't handle it.
There's always some type of glitch somewhere. It seems like, I, you know, I'm not sure. I guess that's maybe what you'd want to call it, glitch.
Anything else you want to answer?
Absolutely.
Okay, roll call vote please, we have a motion, a second to approve.
I just want to say one thing. Did you want to read the, you want to read the?
Did you verbalize it differently?
Yes.
I am sorry. There's stuff. I don't want them coming from health insurance personally. I prefer they come from general funds as the original was stated.
Okay.
And I guess before we have the vote on it, the only thing I saw looking through this is, it's a training for payroll, two days at $1,200 a day and then it says $3,000. Is that like a maximum then, or? Because everything else seemed to.
That was for three people, right?
Well, then it'd be 3,600.
I guess I'm not sure with that, would it include that upgrade discount? I know he gave us quite a bit of a discount.
I mean, it makes no difference either way because I think it's a wise move going this direction.
I mean, I can get that clarified, of course. I see what you're saying. I'm not quite sure if he's, because I know he gave us a percentage off, but I can get that clarified.
Yeah. No, I think it's been a long time coming. I'm glad you guys are doing it.
Are you asking about the number of people?
Well, it says two days at $1,200 a day and then it says $3,000, which that doesn't come out. Got it there, that's, I see what you're saying. I think everybody should have the training on it.
Absolutely. The staff all welcomes the change, so. Okay, no other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Alrighty, so Brown?
Aye.
Fudi?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Murrows?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution, what was it, 71?
71.
2021 has passed.
This resolution has to do with the variance request and the fees that we would like to install. Every year, we do go ahead and vote on what our fee's going to be for the city and this is a change to that. Resolution 69/2021. Resolution to approve the increase in city fee for variance request. Whereas the Finance Committee has reviewed a request to raise the rate for a variance request. And whereas the Finance Committee recommends an increase to be the $750 per meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau this eighth day of February 2022. I move for passage of Resolution 69/2021.
Second. Motion by Brown, second by Evans. Further discussion? Pretty much was, I guess, instigated by the last variance we had. Granted, it was Megan's first time around. I kind of coached her through it on who she should contact. She got some help from the county as far as figuring out the 1,000-foot mailing address for the affected property owners by the variance. And she kind of tracked her time and said it got to be pretty time-consuming between getting all the notices mailed out, let alone the advertisements in the paper, plus the meeting fee for the members and what have you. So, you know, we're trying to not make money off of it, but at least cover our costs, you know, because variances are, shouldn't be granted at will. I mean, it's a, they really should show a hardship, you know, in order for a variance to be granted. So whether the dollar amount will be a deterrent for applying, I don't know. But at least we'll cover our costs. And the law is that you can recover your costs. You can't make a profit on it, but you can recover your costs. And if that's realistic as far as your costs, that's what you should be charging. And I think Megan did a pretty good job tracking what, how much was involved, involved with getting it out and notification sent out. Granted, might be somebody down the, down the workforce to send out the next one or whatever, but at least she got a good idea of how much was involved in getting them sent out. Those sides, so. All right, any further discussion? See you done, roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Fudi?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Murrows?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution 69/2021 has passed. Anything else they had to answer?
I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Moving on to Personnel.
Personnel didn't meet. We had a fairly lengthy discussion about probationary periods and how long they should be. And I had done a fair amount of research about probationary periods. And it seems that they're really an outgrowth of unions and, you know, not being covered until you've had your six months in. And the information that I read did not promote long probationary periods. One of the things that they mentioned is an employee may, if you give them a longer period, they think they have that whole period of which to learn this job and that they couldn't be terminated. Now, that's not really true because we are an at-will state. And it also made it clear that we need to have that in our policy. And, and we do, in two different places in our policy. It's clearly stated that all the city employees are at will. So there just wasn't, you know, best practice wasn't to have long probationary periods. It, it's more, you know, seeing if this is a good fit for both the employer and the employee. And it also obligates the city, the department head, whoever it is, to do that training, that mentoring, regular performance reviews if you're going to keep them on longer. And, you know, are we doing all that? So we did not change our policy. Our current policy, if you don't know it, is six months. And if needed, you can recommend an additional six months. So we did not make any changes to our current policy. But it does bring the issue up of, we should be doing, if you're a chair, you should be doing your performance reviews for your department heads. I don't know if you're doing those annual reviews. If you haven't been doing those, we need to keep up on that. Just as I have reminded department heads, that we need to keep up on annual performance reviews. And I don't know if they have or had not because I've just come on board. So that was our discussion around probationary periods. And that's what our policy says and, you know, I guess I would hope that we follow that. So the other issue that was discussed is we had discovered that our casual day was just put in our handbook, you know, right with all the holidays. And so if somebody is hired on December 20th, they would get a casual day before the end of the year because they get these days every year. So that, it didn't quite make sense that you would be awarded a casual day immediately upon your employment. So we had a discussion around that. And so we have a resolution where we would, you would get your casual day after 12 months of continuous service. So you're, you're gaining that benefit, but not immediately upon your employment on the city. So with that, I will go through the revolution on that. I hit that. Probably should have had this up before I. All right, thank you, Cheryl. And I would like to say, I know at the meeting, we talked about, you know, the casual day was under the holidays, should it be moved to the vacation, but I had a further discussion with both Megan and Pam, who does the HR. And that didn't seem to be the, the right place either. So we've created a separate number for the casual day and said it was not to be considered one of the holidays because on holidays, you have to work the day before and the day after. That's not really the requirement on a casual day. So that's all shown there. So Resolution 70/2021. Approve to amend Personnel Policy Handbook 205 holidays. Whereas the Personnel Committee has reviewed the Personnel Policy Handbook, Section 205 holidays, as shown in Exhibit A. And whereas the Personnel Committee recommends adding number five to Section 205-dash-holidays as follows. Number five, new employees will not be awarded the one casual day benefit until they have completed one year of continuous service. Casual days are not considered one of the 10 holidays listed in 205-dash-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the Common Council of the City of Juneau. passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this eighth day of February twenty twenty-two. I would move for passage of resolution seventy, twenty twenty-one. Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Brown. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Merle?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Booty?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
And Shuster?
Aye.
Resolution seventy, twenty twenty-one has passed. Anything else tonight, Kay?
Uh, no. I think that wraps it up.
Public safety, John?
Uh, we did not have a meeting, but we'd like to welcome, we got a new officer, started last, last month, Dylan Townsend. He's fresh out of the academy, and this is his first job. And, uh, Dr. Dave Beal, he said he's doing real well, so. We see him, I guess, welcome to City of Juneau. We're back up to three officers now, plus Dave, so. That's what I got.
Any questions for John? Moving on, public works, Steve.
We discussed dumpsters for a long, lengthy period. The dumpsters are going to be open now on Saturday, every first and third Saturday of the month. One trip per resident, per, per household, per Saturday. Uh, you need to sign in, just like we have in the past. And we aren't taking free-on products, refrigerators, freezers, um, that kind of thing. Uh, that has to be taken over to, uh, LaGrange is one of the places in Beaver Dam, or you could take it to Mayville. If you are doing a project at home, tearing your house apart for addition or whatever, you need to get your own dumpster, not use the city's dumpster. Um, we talked about combining the dumpster attendant and custodian job together, and we decided that that would be a good thing to do. So we're advertising for a dumpster attendant, custodian to put that back, that job back in motion. We discussed an increase in rental rates for equipment. We are going to get more information on, on, uh, after we discussed it some, we needed, we felt we needed more information to make a better choice on the rental rates. So we're gonna re-discuss that. We discussed fees and services for materials. One of the, the fees we raised was to raise sidewalk snow removal. So when you get your notice that your sidewalk wasn't shoveled, it's gonna be a hundred dollars per time, not sixty. Uh, reason for the raise is that we have several people that just keep paying the sixty dollars. It's, must be too cheap. We don't have time for the city to be running from home to home cleaning that up. So we're gonna charge more to get the people to do it on their own, or hire someone at a cheaper rate than what we're charging. Uh, we discussed the new equipment needed at the, the walk-in cooler at the community center. The equipment in question is, when you go behind the bar in the community center, where the glass door is leaning into the cooler, the, the, the refrigeration equipment is up above that narrow little hallway. And that's where you have to go to get added to service that. So it was, it shut down a couple of times. Chance lost some food because it got so warm in there. So it's, uh, our obligation to do something to continue the, the, to work. We got it fixed again. It's still working. But we, we went and got another bid. Scott gave me two bids to, uh, look at the replacement of it. Uh, it's not gonna be cheap. One of the reasons is because of the placement of where the, where all the workings are for. We approved a letter to be sent out by Chief Beal to four fourteen North Street about trimming the tree. The, uh, regulation in the book is that we're fifteen feet off the street, and their oak tree is twelve foot. So we need to trim a few more feet off so that when the garbage truck goes underneath, it doesn't catch the tree anymore. They have been sent the letter once already and never responded back. So we wanted to get it done in the wintertime, which is the proper time to trim an oak tree so that you don't get oak wilt later on. So we're contacting them to make sure that they're not gonna go out and do that. The last time they did it to the twelve foot, but maybe he can't reach for the fifteen foot. So we're giving them one last chance, and then the city will trim it to the respective height so that we are not damaging the garbage trucks. Um, we discussed approving plowing on the sidewalk of Oak Street from Fair Street to North Main Street. I have been going from business to business to talk to them about, uh, the city coming in. And bef- when we go to plow Main Street, uh, in the past years, there were businessmen that, uh, came in and they, they did all the work and got all the snow from the sidewalk out in the street so the city could haul it away. Well, since then, one of them has left town, the other person passed away. So the downtown is, we're having trouble with snow by the, uh...
Curb and gutter.
By the curb and gutter. Thank you, Dan. By the curb and gutter. And we can't get in with the equipment to clean it up. You come back two, three times to try to catch all the snow so that the safety hazards are down. So the thought was, is if we could get all the businesses to let the city come in, and they plow it out and right out to the street and haul it all the way. They would not, the, city would not be shoveling up the ramps and by the doors. The business people would have to take care of that. So far, uh, everybody is eager to go along with the plan. So I've got a few more people to contact, and then we can move ahead with that project. Let's see. We discussed, um, the, the work Dodge County does for the city of Juneau. The overages on West Street were the problem. Uh, the county and city work real well together. Um, we just had that overage on that project that created a stir, and, uh, we're gonna try to make that not happen the next project. And that was, that was our meeting.
Any questions for Dave?
Dave, what, what equipment do we rent? Into whom?
Well, that, that, it's, the street sweeper gets used by other communities. I mean, we, we drive it to their community to be used.
Got it.
So, you know, that's one of them. If, if a person needed something large hauled, and the city came out with a big front-end loader to haul it, you know, some concrete away, for example, you know, that would be renting that equipment.
Thank you. I wasn't connecting the dots.
No. It's not that you, you would take the skid loader home.
We're gonna burst that bubble.
When we've had flooding and water emergencies, the city's got a big pump too, that they'll, that run out by the hour to pump out backyards and whatever, to get the water moved out to the streets.
Thank you. I was...
Good question.
Trying to connect the dots there.
Just for clarification, those properties that Dave was talking about on East Oak Street, they would be paying an annual fee for the service. They wouldn't get their sidewalks cleaned for free, so, you know? But it would be a reasonable fee, but we figure, um, it'd be a time saver for the DPW because they'd be able to move it all out in one shot and get it cleaned right down to the curb. And rather than guy gets up at eight in the morning, pushes snow out. Guy gets up at ten in the morning, pushes the snow out. By that time, you've got parking on the angle, the angle parking on the street, all between the two, the cars. And then the city can't get in there again and whatever. So they're hoping to get it all cleaned out with one, one big squat and what have you, and move it away. So that was the theory behind that.
Yeah. Scott said it wouldn't take them much time.
No, it'd save them time.
Couple swats, get all out to the road, and get it all cleaned up, and, you know, people packing down or parking along their own stuff up there, so.
It would eliminate, it would eliminate the multiple trips up there, trying to keep the thing groomed up and whatever.
Squeezing between two cars with the equipment to clean it all up, you know? And that could cost us a whole lot more.
So commend Dave for taking the initiative to go door-to-door. It takes a lot of...
Lot of calling.
Means something. But I mean, that, that's what makes something like this work. Somebody's gotta have personal contact with the people and talk to them and convince them that this is good for overall. And I'm glad to hear they're receiving it well.
One other question for you. Your fee for your snow removal, is that part of our established and voted city fees? That it will need to come?
It's gotta come back.
That's what I was saying.
It's a changed fee. We recommend it to raise it from sixty to a hundred, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Make sure that it's a huge finance agenda there.
Any other questions? Thank you, David. Moving on, cable TV.
We did meet, and we are always looking for ideas for recording. Um, at the meeting, we discussed interviewing the Recreation Director. Interviewing new city hall employees, cause we have a new, few new faces. And a hold of the discussion with Scott Carpenter concerning waste dispensers at City Yard, where we can get the word out, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, when it can be done, when should they get a dumpster. Um, have him handle all those questions, get it out there. And then the new video server unfortunately had to be sent back to the manufacturer to make an adjustment to the audio. And Bob Sweeney's taking care of that, and in the meantime, he's gonna be needing some new DVDs to keep productions going. Unfortunately, John Combs, who videotaped, I believe, our last council meeting, is no longer with a, a cable producer. And I'm gonna put it out to every meeting that if anybody's interested in being a cable TV producer, to please let Bob Sweeney know. You're really in need of cable TV producers, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Jane? Thank you, Jane. CDA, we had no meeting. Rec Committee?
Uh, we did meet, and, um, we discussed the NFC Fitness Court, and I think we've covered that. So I won't, uh, you know, go through that again. And we discussed the TPR PlaySpace, which is a, which is fully funded, um, equipment. And, um, Ashton is going to approach the library board to see if they are at all interested in having the playstation, you know, in the library grounds. So I think she's coming to our meeting tomorrow night at the library board. So we'll see what, uh, they say. Otherwise, I think Hickey Park is probably gonna be the designated space. And, uh, well, the additional recreational programs are... The city of Juneau is registered for the Be Active Wisconsin Community. Is that still the case, Ashton?
Yes.
All right.
I would like to register.
It's a challenge. It's a challenge, and, uh, where we as residents can track our activity online for a prize. We could get a teacher.
Everybody gets a teacher.
Everybody gets a teacher. Um, so, uh, I, is that up and running now, or is that...
Uh, yes. You can sign up now. The challenge starts March first.
Okay. So the word's out, everybody. This spring, we are all gonna get active. Um, and let's see, they're gonna do a parents' night out on Valentine's Day. So, uh, if you wanna take your date out and bring your children to the community center, where they will be entertained.
How about cats?
I'm sure you have an agreement that they gotta pick 'em up.
There's an outside time limit, right?
I just put, please be timely on pickup.
Be in the morning.
Yes, be in the morning. Baseball registration is up and going, and, uh, we, and Victory Nutrition is gonna provide some fitness classes at the community center from five to six every Thursday in February. And the Wine and Design Event has been rescheduled for February eighteenth. So, um, yeah, lots of fun activities at the rec department. Thank you, Ashton. And, uh, I think it's going well.
Thank you, Kay.
That's my report.
No other questions? Okay. And lastly, we have the Utility Commission report by the Common Council representative. Unfortunately, we did not have a quorum last night, and we have an agenda item that, uh, that needs immediate action. So I called Andrew to find out if it was all right, if we had the two of the utility commissioners that were in attendance. We had two council members and one commissioner that was out, out, so we didn't have a quorum last night. So we couldn't take action on this. So I had asked Andrew if it was all right that we have these two gentlemen sit in on this meeting. And with now with Cheryl and Richard, who are our two council members, promote this resolution to council.
And it is correct, you are able to do that. You now have a quorum. And, uh, given the urgency of this matter, it makes sense that you would proceed tonight with this. And since you have a quorum, you can go ahead and move forward with it. And you don't have any open meetings issued, because you have it right on your agenda. So you've satisfied both of those criteria.
So we had Tom Unki give a review basically of, uh, the hangup seems to be on the Sensient contract is, is limits. And, um, I guess I'll turn it over to the coun- to the utility commissioners to, to explain what was, happened last night and why we have such an urgency to, to proceed with this.
The, uh, limits that are, were proposed in the original, uh, at that time, the contract with them, uh, they basically agreed to that the limits are, are reasonable. And that this would be, uh, a way so that we don't have to go in every time to do a resolution rather than a ordinance. Would be, be a little more feasible for us to change the rates if we have to again. This is, um, what we're trying to do is make it easier and a little bit simpler than it was in the past. Cause we've been working on this contract now for, uh, two and a half years. And it's, uh, a real stickler. And they come up with, um, problems about meeting. They can't meet. One of them's got COVID, and the next one gets COVID. This one's out of the country, and it's all kinds of excuses they come up with. I have a stack of emails that are probably an inch thick going back and forth on these, trying to get them to agree to a contract. And this is the better alternative than going with a full contract. We will eventually have to go with a contract for the building of the new wastewater plant.
We basically, what we reviewed last night was what's labeled as capacity repayment agreement between the Commission of Juneau and Sensient Flavors. That was forwarded to the attorney. Um, he's had a chance to review it, and I guess I'll let you take the floor.
Sure. Uh, the capacity repayment agreement, what it does is, uh, it puts the cost, a lot of the cost of what Sensient is putting in to the system, it puts it back on Sensient. And allows you over time to review that. Um, you know, Sensient is the major industrial user of the system. And so, uh, to ensure that the user charges are, are covering your operating costs and your debt service associated with the plant, passes those costs on to Sensient. So it's a, it's a good agreement, um, because that's, you're gonna need to expand this plant to take everything that they have. And this then passes that cost on to Sensient. If Sensient ever went out of business, you're gonna require them to get a bond that would cover if they didn't pay what they're obligated to pay. So I think it's a well-put-together agreement, and you could be passing it. If you want, I can read through the whole draft agreement, uh, if you want me to go through it. Or I can keep summarizing it. But the bottom line is that you're passing, uh, the costs that, that without doing this, you wouldn't be able to pass it on to Sensient. You need to do that. and you need to do that.
Tom Monkey is very familiar with these contracts in other communities and we have a very unique, uh, situation here where, where Sensient Flavors essentially consumes half of our capacity in the plant, give or take a few thousand gallons every day, so when we're going to expand a plant and go out on a limb to spend 10, 12 million dollars for a, a plant upgrade, we want to make sure that we're not oversizing it and we want to make sure they're on the hook for their fair share. Now that percentage has not been determined yet, that's one of the things, but we're talking somewhere 35 to 38% from what we talked about last night. So, you know, fortunately, we're designing a plant or hopefully, um, going to build a plant that has some adjustment in capacity, the way the thing is going to be structured and whatever versus how our plant is right now, but, uh, right now, we're at a point like, like Robert had said, we can't seem to get them at the table to make a decision and get us a sign on the bottom line. So now I think we've addressed all of their questions, I think we've got a fair and equitable repayment plan when they do upset our plant or when they violate their capacities that come into our plant and I think it's, uh, the time, we've got to get this thing signed so we can keep going. Fortunately, they did agree to pay the new rate structure that we promoted for the new sewer rate, so they are presently paying that, so we're not, no longer bleeding, you know, we're, we're actually covering our costs as best as we can tell and it'll only be better when we get an updated plant, we'll, that'll operate more efficiently and what have you, but, um, that's why it was so essential to make sure we got this moving so it didn't go another month, another two months or whatever. So if there's no other questions, I guess I'll call upon the commissioners to make a motion to approve this and I'll take a roll call vote from the five, well, from the four of the five commissioners that we have here tonight. It was unfortunate, we just had a situation that we didn't have a quorum last night or we wouldn't have to go through this extra stuff, but these fine gentlemen are getting so educated on city government by sitting here to the second from the last item.
I had a big idea of it before.
Yeah, I think so. Bart wants to run for mayor now, so.
Nope.
So at this time.
Just being an affiliate.
So at this time, I'll entertain a motion from one of the commissioners. Motion by Coons and how would you like that worded, Andrew? How would you like this worded? Because it's not formally written, written on the, on our agenda night, how would you like him to word that in his motion?
What I would do is, uh, I would word your motion that, your motion is to approve a capacity repayment agreement between the Utility Commission of Juneau, the Juneau Utility Commission and Sensient Flavors.
I don't think that's not what we're doing tonight, I thought that was, I thought this, what we were doing was actually, uh.
The resolution.
The resolution.
Sewer rates.
Resolution for the, um.
Sewer rates.
Amending.
Then, then what you're going to do is.
Penalties if they exceed the.
So what, my, my suggestion would be we do and approve the resolution, motion to approve that resolution.
So then your resolution would be amending the sewer charges for industrial users and really the big industrial users, Sensient, but any other industrial users as well.
Does that make sense?
Well, I think that repayment plan should be part of the, part of the motion or incorporated in with that.
Well, what I would do is, uh, you would have a resolution amending the sewer charges for industrial users for Sensient and then with that, uh, you would move forward with the capacity repayment agreement between the Utility Commission and Sensient. And you already have a draft of that, uh, repayment agreement, but you need to refine that a little bit. But at a minimum, you should be having a resolution amending the sewer charges for industrial users.
That's what I'm making a motion to do is, for the resolution.
Motion by, by Bart Coons to amend the resolution or. To take action on the resolution amending sewer rates for the industrial users. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Coons, second by Offelt, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Coons.
Aye.
Offelt.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Resolution to amend the sewer charges for industrial users has passed. The other thing that we wanted to do is discuss and take possible action on the Sensient contract.
But that's not on the agenda.
All right. None of this is on the agenda.
Well, you have the sewer rate amendments right on your agenda at J, it says Resolution 72 dash 2021, approve sewer rate amendments for industrial service.
That's right, that's right.
So, that's what you do then.
All right.
Now, my only question with that resolution is that it says pass for the common council of the city of Juneau.
What we just did was just.
We did the utility commission.
That's what I'm saying, so now the council.
That's why we're trying to do all one. So I guess other than that, that's all we have to have to take action for tonight. I guess in principle, the rest of the repayment will be handled through the contract then, right?
It'll be handled as to Sensient through the contract.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
If you had other industrial users, you'd have.
So that doesn't have to come back to here for any approval, that just gets incorporated with your rubber stamp of approval and then, then hopefully we get a sit down with Sensient and, and the utility commission to execute.
Right. When they finally have time on their agenda, it sounds like.
It's been a long dragged out of event here, like I said, uh, it almost sounds like they're stonewalling, but I'm hoping they're not.
Tom wanted to talk to you about the, I don't know, I'm sure you've done that already.
Well, I called him around four o'clock this afternoon, but I got his cell phone voicemail and I left a detailed voicemail. Overall, his draft is good, I just have a few changes to make to it.
Okay.
He said several times last night, now remember, this is an accountant writing up this draft, so, he says, I certainly want attorney support on this.
That's why I had some changes to, but, but overall, he did a nice job with what he's put together so far. He's a smart man if he can keep it at the table.
We need to get that percentage of what they're going to pay in the contract.
Right.
That's the big thing and he said it could be anywhere from, last night he said, he's hoping the lowest would be thirty-two and the highest would be somewhere around thirty-eight, he was hoping for.
Okay, I'll talk to him specifically about what that percentage should be.
Well, you've got to wait for Matt from MSA to get in touch with him with the numbers on that.
Okay.
And he knows they're not going to accept the first draft, so it'll be back and forth again. Well, I thank the commissioners for showing up tonight and appreciate the council members for supporting the resolution, so.
We still need to move this resolution as a.
Yes, yes, that's what's going to be an entertaining motion now at council level to approve Resolution 72 2021 and, Richard, you want to read it?
Sure. Resolution 72 dash 2021, approve sewer rate amendments for industrial service. Whereas the Utility Commission in partnership, partnership with Acre Tilly has performed a sewer rate study and whereas the Utility Commission recommended the previous passage of the sewer rates as established effective November first, 2021. Whereas the Utility Commission recommends the passage to amend portions of the sewer rates that reflect approved discharge limit modifications and introduction of surge payments as part of the industrial sewer rate as shown below to be effective February first, 2021.
Two, two.
Twenty twenty-two. One, agreed, agreed discharge limits, the permittee may discharge wastewater from the facility in the volumes and with the strength characteristics set forth in the schedule of Sensient's ADLs attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference. Two, ADL exceedance penalties, ADL exceedance penalties shall be imposed pursuant, pursuant to the following, agreed discharge limits Sensient Flavors. Maximum discharge limits, volume total three hundred thousand gallons per day, BOD maximum concentration fifty milligrams per liter, total one hundred and twenty-five pounds per day, suspended solids maximum concentration fifty milligrams per liter, total one hundred and twenty-five pounds per day, phosphorus maximum concentration ten milligrams per liter, total twenty-five pounds per day. An ADL exceedance shall be defined as a discharge or a series of discharges by a significant industrial user in excess of the applicable ADLs referenced above if any of the following of the maximum daily value twenty-four hour basis, for volume, BOD, SS or PHOS exceeds the applicable, applicable maximum day limit as shown above. ADL exceedance penalty, significant industrial user shall be subject to temporary disconnection if ADL exceedances occur and if the sewer utility personnel believe in their professional opinion that the industrial discharges pose a risk to the WWTP operational effectiveness and/or safety. Juneau Sewer Utility will reconnect service as soon as it believes that the risk has been mitigated. The ADL thresholds serve as a primary guide to Juneau Sewer Utility, but do not necessarily mean that disconnection will occur if ADL thresholds are met. Juneau Sewer Utility explicitly states that its desire is to never disconnect service. Disconnection actions are meant as a last resort to protect the plant. The parties understand that these thresholds are to provide customer clarity to ensure that disconnection will never occur so long as ADLs are maintained under these criteria so long as force majeure events do not occur. One, surge penalties, the permittee agrees to pay surge penalties as set forth, surge penalties, daily flows and strengths are monitored by the commission. In the event of a significant increase in flows and concentrations, Sensient will be subject to the following penalties, the type of surge is based on pounds per day. A low surge is defined for suspended solids as fifty to seventy-five pounds per day or forty to sixty percent of maximum pounds per day, total phosphorus as thirteen to eighteen pounds per day or fifty to seventy percent of maximum pound per day and BOD as fifty to seventy-five pounds per day or forty to sixty percent of max pounds per day. A moderate surge, moderate surge is defined for suspended solids as above seventy-five pounds per day or above sixty percent of maximum pounds per day. For total phosphorus, phosphorus, it's greater than eighteen pounds per day or greater than seventy percent of maximum pounds per day and BOD is greater than seventy-five pounds per day or greater than sixty percent of maximum pounds per day. A severe surge is defined as for suspended solids, greater, greater than one hundred and twenty-five pounds per day and when occurrence is for three days out of a seven day period. Total phosphorus, severe surge is defined as greater than twenty-five pounds per day and when occurrences, when occurrence is for three days out of a seven day period and BOD is defined as greater than one hundred and twenty-five pounds per day and when occurrence is for three days out of a seven day period. Payments will be calculated based on pounds per day. Treatment goals, um, would cost zero and communication, none required. A low surge would, um, require a payment of zero dollars and a prompt communication between the city and Sensient to discuss wastewater treatment concerns. A moderate surge would, uh, incur a payment of five hundred dollars per daily occurrence and prompt communication between the city and Sensient to discuss wastewater treatment concerns. A severe surge would, um, have a payment of a minimum of twenty-five hundred dollars per occurrence after concentrations and or pounds per day occur for three out of seven days, including all costs incurred to address remediation and a twenty percent administration fee and there would be prompt communication and meeting between the city and Sensient. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau on this eighth day of February, 2022. I move for passage of Resolution 72 dash 2021.
Second.
Motion by Evans, second by Brown, any further discussion? Just want to give our treatment plant operators full credit, they work as a team to get some of these, these levels set up so that it was fair and equitable for both parties and, and, uh, Juneau should be able to cover their costs when we do have an upset and they, just for a matter of record, Sensient's been very good for most of this last year as far as not upsetting our plant, so, kudos to them and it's, we've got to work together in order to make this thing fly, so. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote please.
Evans?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Merle?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution 72 2021 has passed.
Do I need to do it again?
We're going to do a city ordinance.
I think I slapped the last one.
I think you should have divided, that's what's going on here.
I think we've got to give them standing ovation.
What do I do when I lose my borders? Okay, any old business tonight. Any new business, we approve of provincial licenses for forty-five days for Calista McDon, McDaniel. Is there a motion to add effect? Motion by Schuster, second by Grattan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried and approve regular bartender's licenses for 2022 expires June thirtieth, 2022, recommended approval for Calissa McDon, McDaniel, is there a motion to add effect? Motion by Merle?
Second.
Second by Foodie, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. No other business?
Second.
Motion by Schuster, second by Brown, do adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried, thank you. This meeting is closed.